Select Board's meeting July 10th, 2018, Tuesday, 4:30 PM. In attendance Chairman Joe Didi, Russ Fox, Doug Moglen, Carl Steinhardt, Cindy Pendleton.
Good afternoon, folks. Here we are, July 10th. Public comment, anybody got anything to say? Name and address for the record.
I'm looking out, anybody here?
Nobody. You in the back? No? Okay, thank you. All right, move on. Let's see, 4:35, look at that, right on time or a minute early. Chief of Police regarding Sergeant's Position. Gentlemen, how are you today?
I'm very good.
Very well.
We're coming before you tonight because we do have an open Sergeant's Position within the department now. And the way that has come about is because we made a decision, Lieutenant and I, over the past week of looking at our personnel, that's available to us, is replacing him in the Detective Bureau. So, we are going to take Sergeant Krudka and assign him to the Detective Unit Bureau at that point in time. So now that leaves open that split shift, which is two 4:00 to 12:00s and two midnight shifts.
So if you had put the janitor as the detective, would that have created another Sergeant's Position open? Like, do you have to... We're lucky that Krudka's a Sergeant, so we move it over and we have an opening. If you had chose someone that wasn't a Sergeant for Detective, would there have been a Sergeant opening? Because you were a Sergeant.
Technically, to the letter of the way it stands right now, no, we could put a person in there and they would be just a patrolman at that point in time. That is something that we will be discussing with the board and Carl down the road. We do really think that position should be a Sergeant's Position, because Bobby can speak on that with the other responsibilities that came with that position. It's grown so much over the years. Like Bomber just being a DB, you know? Now, what he has to do with the DB Position has evolved into, Bobby, you can relate a little bit now.
Well, I mean, it just over the years has evolved into quite largely a Supervisor's Role, because you're overseeing all the investigations of all the guys. You're dictating what's going on at the crime scenes, you're dealing with the District Attorney's Office, you're planning, scheduling, you're doing all the roles that, in many ways, have been more than a Patrol Sergeant's doing. The responsibilities are large, and our future is, as we see, the town's growing and everything's growing, we're getting to the need where we're really gonna kinda start expanding the Detective Bureau. It doesn't necessarily mean we'll get another full-time guy right away, but...
It isn't what it was 10 years ago.
No, it's just because of the electronic crimes and the things that are coming, it's taking a bigger toll, takes so much more to investigate, it's almost impossible for one guy to do it alone. So, we think for the structure and the future of the department, to lose this position would set us backwards, where we're rolling forward, that where we want to expand as the years move forward, that department. And we do have some personnel now that, in the past, were really answered directly to the former chief. And he had a full plate. And to have all these guys and not answer to anybody but him, it may not, didn't make any, it doesn't make sense to me or Kevin at this point, and we want to kind of bring them into the oversight of that detective, of the Sergeant, in that area. So, that's kind of our...
But that's your further, you know...
Oh, absolutely. But I just, moving back and forth, you know, in discussions, like, how does this really work? You brought it up last week.
We'll go through the mechanics of it with Lady of the Council.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is to just keep in mind too, we're not yanking Lieutenant just out of that position tomorrow. We know there's gonna be a learning curve with whoever comes into that. He's still gonna be overseeing the Detective, you know, the unit over there, working with Sergeant Krudka, bringing up...
The transition.
Yeah, there's gonna be quite a bit of time. There's gonna be a lot of training that you're gonna have to be involved, you know.
There'll always be oversight of that person in that department.
But I'm not saying tomorrow that Tommy's gonna take on his first sexual assault investigation. If some of those things come up in the next couple of months, Lieutenant will still be dealing with those until we feel very comfortable that he's ready to take the ball over that. So, that's how we get to that point in time. We put together this internal posting, we took some of the same postings that we had from previous ones, we met with Carl today, sent it back and forth, and we believe that this is the acceptable standard that would be good to go. The first one's really the posting, and the second one is really just the job description. It's the same job description that we used, actually just out of the contract, the newest contract. Yeah. And the things that we're kind of looking at that might jump out at you is we're asking for the applicants to be, the paperwork to be submitted back to you guys by 4:00 PM on the 27th. And, because today is the 10th, right? Where are we at? Today is the 10th?
That's fine.
Probably want to just put July there, Kevin.
I'm sorry, where did I mess that up?
The process there.
It's 27th.
Okay, on July 27th, yeah.
Yeah, just right there.
My mistake.
Helps with the grievances.
On July 27th? So if we could have those back by the 27th, you guys, you know, it's another, get them to you right at that point, on that Friday, turn them over if you will, you guys would have them all on that Friday. And then we just put that sometime in August.
Right. Right, because you've had, so they'll be coming in here, you have meetings here and here, on your summer schedule.
I have no idea what you guys have...
We have the continued liquor hearing, we don't have much, August 7th is the continued date certain, hearing on...
Village.
For Village. So, it's not like we couldn't fit stuff in.
Oh, 7th would be perfect, because it gives us a week to look at them.
The benefit of the 7th would also would allow, because when do the guys graduate from the academy?
August 3rd.
So, somehow, because we're gonna be doing shifts and things like that, and to be able to have, be able to put guys in the play, it would be kinda nice if we were through the interview process.
Oh, it's possible. But, yeah, the 7th.
But we do know we'll leave that to the board, but we're just, if you thought you could pull it off, we would like the 7th, but we know you have a busy schedule also during the summer. But, that's right, Carl, I just decided just put August in there so we're not...
Right, we could, right, posting can never limit you on when you're gonna do an interview.
Right. Are you around on the 7th?
But you can certainly let...
God willing.
Other than him.
The Chief and Lieutenant can let any prospective candidate who submits know.
Well, that's our getting act.
Those two gates, don't book a vacation on either one of those gates.
Vacation time of all people.
If you're interested in coming before the board for promotional...
We checked our attendance schedule, at this point in time, we have nobody on schedule, on vacation at the time, we have one, but he's willing to come back that day, if it is scheduled, he's already made that known to us. But nobody else right now is in our attendance for vacation at that time.
Because you only have a limited number of people that could actually...
Well...
Project four. Just numerically, we don't want five as your universe.
Yeah.
Probably five.
Under the criteria, posted here five years worth of service, you know, and stuff like that.
Might have five.
So the board would need to just review this and to make a vote authorizing the Chief of Police to post this as of tomorrow's posting date on the 11th. Somu.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What are you at there, four?
Yeah. It's irrelevant. Okay.
Okay, how's the 7th? Anything else?
Nothing, that was easy. Thank you. I know, I know, I was waiting for a hot seat.
It's the honeymoon period, my friend.
The details are...
It's almost over.
Got it, I do appreciate that. Bobby clear, and I guess I'll just stand by, because I think we might be back up again.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
That's it, I'll see you in the morning.
All right.
Watch out for deer.
Acknowledged payable warrant, 7/2/18, number 1901B for, I hate these big numbers, Acknowledged payroll warrant, 1901, dated 7/9/18, in the amount of $297,724.96. And we're gonna wait until next week for the minutes, okay?
I believe this is why the first one's...
Yeah, the board had asked for...
Yes, no, no, understood, yep. All right, first up is Team Justice, one-day liquor license, and entertainment license. You got a comedian there?
No.
That's too bad.
Yeah, Bobby's gonna be there.
That's too bad.
I'm gonna be there.
Well, I got one comedian, that's good.
If I give you a quick history on this real quick?
Please do.
Yeah, our Secretary for Team, and I'm getting out and speaking in the role as Police Chief, and I was speaking as a member of, as Team Justice, but the Secretary of our Team Justice, Lon Winchell, made me aware, there was a lot of chatter on the social media about Mr. Slate starting to put together a fundraiser for his family, you know, unit. She made me aware, so I went and started to take a look at it, I'd seen that Bobby had tried to reach out to a lot of our local businesses that had outside facilities, and they were filled, and he couldn't get the date that he was looking for.
Right.
You know, he listed he was gonna have it at his house, that scared me, Bobby, living on a very, very...
Turn there.
Yeah, so I know he would've done the best he could, but it just concerned me at that point in time. So, we reached out to him as Team Justice and said, listen, Wally Park is a situation, beautiful park, you know, here in town, and he went and took a look at it, fell in love with the place, you know, at that point in time. That's where, how we became involved with the reason we have a special interest in this too, is Bobby was a Team Justice mentor for two, three years, so that's our payback back to, back to his family and his commitment. And we always said with the Team Justice kids, we try to then give back to the community, they're gonna be helping out this fundraiser that day also, setting up chairs, doing cables and things like that. So this is where we come, now, we understand, you know, at this point in time. Mr. Slate, his family, from his grandparents, have been in town 50 years, he was the owner of...
Tybreakers.
Tybreakers, was it? Was it Tybreakers?
Tybreakers.
Him, his sister, his brother, they all graduated from our school system. His sister Pauline left Southwick a couple of years ago?
Oh, she went to Arizona for a few years, about five years, and then they moved to Florida, under Stewart, Florida. So probably seven years ago they moved out. My brother-in-law, working at a paper factory for most of his life up here, contacted us, I don't know what he got, but he had COPD for the better part of his older, you know, he's 58 or 59 years old. And they took both of his lungs, so, he just had a double lung transplant like a month ago. And he's still in the hospital, the bills are rolling.
Oh, yeah.
We said, let's have a little fundraiser to get him some help.
And Pauline took a leave absence from work.
Yeah, she took a leave absence now from out. She knows about it now, I actually called her the other day because I had to, it was getting too big, and thank God it's not in my house. I'm serious, because I mean, I wouldn't want to do... But, you know, we had to do something at that point, I couldn't just, she had no money coming in, and he's got a limited income coming in. So, that's where we're at, and, you know, we're looking for a liquor license to just boost...
And parking rec is good with the use of the park.
Yes, that's already been confirmed.
What's the date?
The date is August 4th?
Saturday, August 4th, 2 to 7.
2 to 7, I'm not looking for crazy.
So only the board can approve a one-day license and a liquor license on that parcel?
Yes.
I've been, I've actually been in the liquor, in the liquor business for 10 years at the bar, and I've been another 15 years at the package store that I manage on the job. I'm pretty versed in the...
Chicken?
Yeah, I'm over by the tractor trailer training school.
He has two tip servers that would be taken care of, that are certified tip servers?
At least, at least two, I'm trying to get four, that way they can swap out if it's gonna be a rough day, you know what I mean? I'm tip certified myself.
And the other thing that he's also, too, doesn't indicate in the map here too, is he's setting up a band system, a wristband system. And everybody over 21 will be given a band, so he's doing his homework.
They'll be given two, everybody gets two bands, or, not everybody, but over 21, they'll get either a yellow or a neon band. And the other one will be a food band, so, you know, like, doing what they want to do at that point.
Right.
And the DJ, is it Chris?
It is Chris.
Chris Shannon is gonna be our DJ when it comes to the entertainment, you know, part of it.
Make sure he gets a wristband.
Yeah. Just the food. I figured I'd use your punchline.
I certainly drink, so...
And Lieutenant Landis actually signed off on it, but he physically went down there with myself the other day after work, and we mapped the whole thing out, so he physically saw the layout of what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're all good with...
Yeah, Rotary's been doing a few events here with liquor, so Landis is already accustomed to the setup down there. Well, sounds good. I don't have any questions. I'm sure there'll be an officer there if needed, whatever that works.
Yeah, the way they've explained to me that Bobby is Lieutenant, has said it before, is that they've kinda like, they...
They waive it, but if you fall in...
The first incident there's an issue, they either play shuts down for a higher...
I really believe that, I mean, this is gonna be my family.
Well, it's family.
This is gonna be my family and...
Yeah, but them slates, have they quieted down? Has something changed?
You're talking to the wrong guy, I've been there for 55 years.
Has something changed with those slates I knew?
Well, we were gonna bring that up.
If it was 20 years ago, I probably wouldn't have...
Mellow is the word.
Maybe out in Forty Acres somewhere.
Mellow.
Mellow. Mellow is the word.
Yeah, understand.
Everybody will be looking to go home about 5 o'clock.
Yeah, especially with this one.
Make a motion to approve a stipulated waiving the officer, only officers needed.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're all set, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Carl?
Thank you very much.
Cindy, thank you for getting me through the process. I'm ready to... Gentlemen, we'll see you later.
Thanks for your sign in.
Sign it up top there somewhere.
So, 1A, Cindy, 1A, 4A's the same, right? 4A's the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so 2A is a...
I pulled it out of the action folder.
Reappointment?
Appointments for CMA. Somu.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You don't really have to sign all those.
No.
Stamp it.
Stamp, stamp and go. Okay.
Next one is the Fire Department.
Next up is Fire.
No.
Motion table.
Motion table. Second.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then we have select board reappointments?
Yeah, there may be some other ones in there to do.
Yeah, there's another list. What do you, yeah, those are the rest of what you did not...
What did we did not do?
Yeah. And added is, what's the real name you're gonna call it?
250th, Southwick 250th...
Anniversary Committee?
Jubilee. Anniversary Committee.
Jubilee.
I'll make a motion for the names listed.
Yep.
Okay. And then we're gonna work on having somebody possibly come to the next meeting to swear everybody out. Well, I'm sure we'll get more people as we go along.
Right.
Okay.
So I'll second the motion for the...
For the Jubilee?
Jubilee.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All right, so Jubilee's done. All right.
Motion to table.
All right.
Motion to table the rest?
The rest of it for now.
Okay.
He's dying.
Second.
Second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, 3A. Sewer Implementation Committee conducting a meeting that the...
Yeah, they just wanna let you know they don't feel they need to meet for another six months because of the issue of no projects are attending. Can I, Joe?
So, this is just FYI?
Yeah, there's nothing going on. We talked about that other project and they were...
Yeah, you almost wonder if the committee needs to even meet.
Well, they...
Yes. Request for transfer for dispatch.
Yep, the board already signed us, so you're gonna reaffirm both of these reserved requests?
Okay, so we need to reaffirm...
I'll second Russ's motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that was for the Medicare, and it was also for the dispatch.
Right.
Okay.
And just as a follow-up on that, that's separate and distinct from the municipal modernization year-end transfers that you're gonna be doing for the, you okayed it for the Unappointment Trust Fund, but Laura's was able to, she's got enough funds...
Taking no chances.
Me too. She's got enough funds in the other line, and so the...
Sorry, buddy.
So what you will be signing, Joe, is the...
I'm glad I'm used to germs all over.
Those four roads, Joe, those four roads that you guys had identified?
Yes.
Two sections on Klein?
Yeah.
One on Vine Hill?
Yeah.
And then George Lopez.
George Lopez, right.
So that, Joe will be coming in to sign that in the next day or two, and the FinCom Chairman will, and Laura has put aside the money to do the transfer, and you've already authorized Joe to sign.
Unfortunately, we don't have a Domino's Pizza in town, there seem to be out-patching roads, but maybe next year.
So I just want to be clear that he will be...
They might be spending 10 years in Westfield first.
They'll probably close the Domino's Pizza.
We don't have a Domino's here.
And they're not gonna come to Westfield.
No.
Okay, so there's your clarification on that, Joe.
Okay. 6A, approve agreement for consulting services with David Ricardi.
So the board should authorize Joe to sign it? Somu.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I'll sign the actual one, not this?
You already did.
Already did, okay.
Reaffirm.
Reaffirmed it, for that project. All right, 7A, PBPC, closed, filing paperwork needs town authorization, two discharge of liens for rehab project in Granville. Looks like it's $12,000 from Deborah A. Hanson as the owner, 145 Silver Street, Granville. And the other one is, same thing.
No one knows an amended amount, if you look at it, if you're looking, they're both for the same property?
Okay.
But what happened was is there had been an original lien, and then there was a supplemental.
Yeah.
So you'll see there's two different dollar amounts on it.
Right, because I assigned...
One was a small, one added on, see it?
Right, yep.
Okay.
Yep, so need a motion to reaffirm?
Yep. Somu.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Cindy will notarize that tomorrow.
Yeah. Mr. Pace, letter from Mr. Pace.
I did see him coming into the Council on Aging today, looked like he was gonna try to play cards.
Yep, he's resigning from his seat on the Council of Aging, effective immediately.
Right, so, we have a, we have a, you'll sign that, and then you'll see from the Council on Aging, their chairperson, Paula LeBlanc, and the Council on Aging Director are petitioning you to elevate the existing experienced associate member.
Okay, so a motion to accept this...
Somu. Regretfully.
Regretfully. I should've gave it to you first, because he's gonna touch the marker.
Ready?
Ready?
The doctor says you just gotta let it run its course.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. We don't need to turn it over through us.
Yeah, which course was that?
Yeah, right.
Because the last time I had to go see him when he was sick in December, Joe, remember what happened?
And you got it.
For four days, my staff wouldn't let me come in.
Yeah, that had nothing to do with him being sick either. He walked into that one, that was a ground ball. Thank you.
All right, so yeah, Paula LeBlanc regarding her pace resigning, they wanna move her up?
Move...
She attends the scene every day.
You'll see the other person's name there.
Yes. Teresa Rogers, as a voting member.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just like, oh. It's where you're gonna have it last, so you can put it in that pile.
Yeah.
Okay, 9A, due to the extreme heat, this is from Rick Johnson at Motocross, they canceled an open practice, they like to reschedule that date as a school on Tuesday, August 14th. There'll be a maximum of 20, max of 20 C riders at the event, so they're doing a school for 20 riders on Tuesday, August 14th, if that's allowed.
Somu. Second petition.
Yeah, all those in favor?
To adjust his calendar, right?
Yeah, yep. You don't even know those 20 vikes there. All right, might even go by this, huh? Okay, so, up next is a application for license, it's like a liquor permit, one-day liquor license for Our Lady of the Lake, she passed a road here in Southwick, their annual Bavarian Fest, August 19th, from 11:30 to 5:00.
Yeah.
In the past, we have waived the police officer, and they're looking for approval.
Somu. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I must commend the Chair on the expedience of this meeting.
Yeah. All right, up next is an entertainment license for One Call Away, David Sutton. Um, recommend, where, okay, so he must be having music at his event. So we need a motion to approve.
Somu.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Did you miss one?
I did. So, looks like this is pretty picture here, we got the...
The Rotary needs it.
Wednesday, Wally Park Pavilion.
You already did the one-day liquor licenses for all three of them, but...
So this is for the three dates, right?
You need the companion votes.
The entertainment.
Going forward, whenever Cindy brings a liquor application before you, there'll be the corresponding entertainment.
Yeah, sounds good. 69 does not include it up and down, okay, so we need a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Looks like it's this Wednesday, Truck Stop Troubadours, and then August 8th is David Neal and the Dixie Band Stompede, and it also looks like August 15th is the Savage Brothers. No coolers allowed, food and beverage for sale.
Bring your own chair.
Bring your own chair, yep. All right, so that's all set, now we go into old business, Snow and Ice, I haven't had time to get to Randy, I will try this week. Updating two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary.
Are you appointing them tonight?
We did already.
We did it.
Those are all set, okay.
Those were set.
And the meeting is all set?
Later. Next, uh, Monday.
Next Monday?
So if you could put a little zap in the paper about that?
Absolutely, once again.
Four score and seven years ago.
Sure.
Next Monday's the meeting.
Yeah, it should be seven, it should say seven sixteen.
Yeah, I changed, yeah.
Looking for anybody with a heartbeat under fifty.
Yeah.
You know, so we're starting, sorry, Russ. All right, goals and objectives from the select board.
Have a heartbeat by next.
I'm afraid of the board member on that.
And do you wanna touch on that tonight, or I know in deference to Mr. Fox?
Yeah, and do you wanna go over goals and objectives, or you wanna wait till next week?
The only, well, the only.
We're waiting. What goal and objective you want us to look at?
The library, I've been contacted by Dave Gunn several times.
Oh, the old library?
The old library.
Yeah, so what do you wanna, so, we, it's set up so we either sell it or lease it?
Right.
Either way, and do we have a for-sale sign out front yet?
No, because we have no.
No, no.
Board hasn't given me any.
Any input.
Any input, right, you need to make a policy decision. You leased, what you did before was you leased it out twice.
Right.
We had people come and look at it, we had people interested in it, and their feedback at that time was they wanted to buy it. So then you went through this process.
Yes.
But we, we checked with town council too, though, the effect of the article at town meeting did not supersede the previous article, so we have the right to do whatever we want now.
You do, your policy decision is still there.
My suggestion is, is that we put out a news release that we're, or solicitation for proposals or whatever, how, that's your thing. By the end of July or sometime middle of August, and then we open them up, and we, we look at who has the best in.
For lease or purchase?
I don't care, right, we have both. I guess what he's suggesting is that the proposal be an option, either a lease and lease or purchase. Or a lease option to buy, we can do anything now, because the town meeting has given us that authority to, to, to get the highest and best use for the town for this property, right? So we had one person in front of us, I know I received some phone calls, you know, that you and I spoke about, right?
I, I, I've had more people come in, I've got a couple of names for people who wanna buy.
So, and we should call them back up and say, look, okay, send us your proposal, what, what are you looking to do? What, you know, what do you think is what, and then we could either have some meetings, or we can.
Well, it's a little, I have to go through those other procurement steps. So we actually have to do a posting to the Secretary of State's publications, and we have to amend the document that we had before to make it this option that you guys wanna do for both.
Okay.
And then we'll do that, we can put it out, and Ben will help me do that, we'll have an open house, we'll have a walkthrough of people, and then we'll get, and then we will get the results of who wants to lease and who wants to buy.
And I would make that motion then.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that should be done by Friday, huh?[1526.31]